Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. And pass to Doug Pratt from the First Presbyterian Church. Please give any vacation, please stand if you can.
Thank you very much and good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members and city staff. Thank you for the privilege of praying for you. Lord, there is so much we have to be grateful for. We've been blessed. We are thankful for this beautiful part of your world that we call home. We are thankful for our country and its freedoms and rights. We are thankful that you have brought us through a difficult year unlike any we've experienced. We're thankful for the skills of industry and scientists who are now presenting to us vaccines to protect us. There are a lot of things to be grateful for. Lord, I want to pray now for these individuals, these men and women who have stepped forward to serve all of us. We pray for the mayor, for the council members, and for the staff. We pray that you will give them wisdom, that they might make the best decisions for all of us. We pray that they will listen well and hear and understand the problems and concerns. We pray that they will work well together. We pray that all they do might further the great quality of life that we know and enjoy. I pray this in the name of the God whom I love and serve. Amen.
Amen. Amy Caramba, could you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please? Thank you.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Here.
Councilman Purdon?
Here.
Councilwoman Carr?
Here.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Here.
Councilman Corey?
Here.
Councilman Gibson?
Here.
Councilman Forbes?
Here.
Okay. Do we have any changes to the agenda tonight? Approval of the agenda? Saying none, we'll move along. Okay. Welcome to the city council meeting. We are the seven of us up here that were elected to represent you. We need your input so we can represent you. Starting on my far left, your right, I'd like to introduce Fred Forbes, District 6, Mike Gibson, District 5, Chris Curry, District 4, Amy -- excuse me. I go from Amy Caramba, District 1, Jessie Purdon, District 2, and Laura Carr, District 3. And I'm Rick Steinmeier, Mayor Rick, and we're off and running today. If we have public comment, anybody from the public, please give us your input. Come to the microphone and introduce yourself. Thank you.
Ben Herschinson, Benita Springs Golf and Country Club area. I just want to speak on a couple of items on the consent agenda. I know that the council will probably approve them, but it's always good to get on the record. I stand here and I support the acceptance of the bid for the Maddox Lane sidewalk and drainage project. I can only tell you, it's been a long time in coming, and I know that the COVID issue has delayed this even longer. But I want to thank the Assistant City Manager. I've been bugging him about this for years, and it's -- I'm happy to see it's coming to fruition. When that sidewalk is completed, it is going to greatly enhance the safety for the walkers, the dog walkers. And it's pretty -- it's a small little lane, Maddox Lane, but boy, oh, boy, it's really curvy, so you can hardly wait for this to happen. They'll make a nice connection from Paradise Road, Maddox Lane, and on to Cockle Shell. So it's been a long time in waiting, so I stand here in support. And the second item, of course, is to approve what the management wants to do with respect to the FEMA grant from the state regarding the Benita Springs golf course flood enhancement, just to extend that contract. Again, this is a very important thing for the residents in the Golf and Country Club area, and anything that can enhance the -- and to improve and mitigate the flooding in that area is something I will always support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Barbara Ogle, and first of all, I want to thank you for letting me be on the tree advisory committee. At least, I hope you vote that I'm on that. Also, I want to speak on the green sheet 2103048. We have formed a loosely knit citizens group, and right now, we have seven board members. They include myself, Dwight Esmond, Shelley Anderson, Sophie LaRue, Bill Douglas, John Spear, Sandy Gibbons, and Charlie Strater. And our mission statement of the group is to provide input from interested citizens of Benita Springs to the city council on current and future projects throughout the city. Input would be in the form of correspondence to council members attending and speaking at council meetings, as well as meeting with individual council members. The group would also provide information to citizens that wish to be informed about city issues. Tonight, we're speaking in support of the saving the iconic historic landmark, the Good Bed Bread Grocery. And while plans for the downtown corridor are being considered, have you thought about a welcome center for downtown? Would it be cost effective to use all or part of this building? Or could the Lyles Hotel or any other city-owned property be used? We hope the city will consider surveying existing downtown businesses, our residents and visitors to the area, as to whether or not they believe a welcome center would promote downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else come forward? Okay. On the consent agenda presented by staff, where I am going to pull G, 8G, since we have an addendum item. If we could vote for the rest of the -- the rest of the items, can you call for a vote for --
Motion to approve?
Second. Any other comments? A roll call on the rest of the agenda?
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Okay, now, on 8G, we have four people volunteers for three positions. Are any of the volunteers here, could you please, would you like to come forward and speak to us? Introduce yourself.
To clarify, Mayor, this is for the Historic Preservation Board designation.
Yes, yes.
Hello. Mayor, Council, my name is John Pano. I've been involved in historic preservation most of my life. Prior to coming here, I worked for New York State Parks and Historic Preservation. When I moved here, I worked for the Florida Museum of Natural History on Pine Island, installing the Heritage Trail. Now that I'm here, I work with the Historical Society and provide historic walks and do tours out to Mount Key and tell people our very fascinating and important history.
Yes, John, you've been involved with the downtown businesses for quite a few years?
Yes, sir. I was one of the founders of the Downtown Alliance, and I was the president for six years plus.
Thank you, John.
Mr. Mayor, Council, my name is Rick Myers. I purchased a home here and moved -- I didn't move, I moved in September. I purchased a home in March of last year. I'm from Minnesota. I was involved in my community of Minnesota. I was the chair of a citizens advisory committee that redesigned Minnehaha Park in Minneapolis. And then when I moved to my last location in Orno, I was a park commissioner for 10 years, and I was the chair for four years. And we used our parks to interpret the history of our area. So I'm familiar with trying to do development and try to do things and tie it into things of historical interest. My background of education, I have a BA in urban planning, an MA in public safety education. I was in law enforcement for 36 years. I was a police officer, deputy sheriff, and a deputy US marshal. I don't know if any of that applies to historic preservation. It's more like your own preservation, and I survived that, so I'm here to serve again, if accepted. Thank you.
I appreciate you coming forward. Thank you, sir. Anybody else applying for the Historic Preservation Board? Seeing none, I guess --
Can I ask you a question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
On one of the applications, Travis Burgon, he also asks about two other committees. Is there any need on those committees? Bicycle Safety and the Outreach Advisory?
I'm sorry, I got hard to follow. Who was that?
Travis Burgon.
It's one of the applicants -- see, we have one too many, which is fabulous in some way.
Travis.
Travis Burgon.
You're saying he's on other committees?
No, I'm saying he put down, if you look at his application, he put down --
And he has three.
Mr. Mayor, if you could, if you could put your mic down so that -- I don't think you're being broadcast. No, no. Put it down so we can hear you. Okay. For this, for the council's application, for this vote, we have four applications for three spots. So we have prepared ballots for you to help select.
And --
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Jessie.
I'd just like to say that Mr. Travis Burgon did take the time to email all of us, and we all have a nice letter in front of us on his interest in the board. So just for the record, everybody, you can look at this. This is the gentleman she was referring to. So it seems to me that he is more than excited to join the board, so this is Travis.
Any other comments?
I believe what Councilmember Carr was asking is, do the other committees have vacancies? And Madam Clerk, do we have any vacancies in the -- I don't believe we have any. I don't believe we have any in the Bike Committee. I believe that -- I'm not sure 100% of the Outreach Committee. I don't believe there's any vacancies on the Outreach, but I'm not 100% sure.
You ready to vote? We have --
May I just ask?
Voting forms. Everybody have a voting form?
May I ask one more question?
Sure.
On the Historic Preservation Board, is it full? I mean, are there any more spaces?
You have three vacancies on the Historic Preservation Board, and you have four applicants.
So this should fill up the board.
So at this time?
We do have one that's petering on leaving. So we could maybe reach out to the person who doesn't get the vote.
Let's just vote on what we got in front of us, please.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we can have any comment on the agenda that we just voted and passed. Any comment on it? I think I was going to comment on a --
The clerk will pull the numbers together and give us the results.
Yeah, I was going to comment on the Florida Power and Light, and I'd like, Matt Feeney's here, if he could explain the situation where we have Old 41, that the lines are under the ground already, but they're not hooked up to the businesses. And on Terry Street, they haven't started to go underground yet, and could, if Matt, if you could, please give us an update of where we're going and how we get there.
Yes, sir. So you've pretty well succinctly explained it, but I'll give a little bit of an update for everyone. Old 41, when we started the downtown project several years ago, the infrastructure was included for the underground power. We've been working with FPNL ever since to pull electrical line. They're just about complete. When they complete that process, they will energize the live line underneath Old 41, and the final piece will then be for the city to connect the businesses along that corridor to the underground lines. Once all of that is complete, the power will actually be removed from the western side of 41, from Oak Creek to the Terry Street Roundabout. So that was one of the green sheets for the commercial service connections. We anticipate that work hopefully will happen here, you know, within this year. We're still coordinating with FPNL on the final piece so that we can do our part. The second piece, when we commissioned the West Terry Street Multi-Use Path Project, we also retained FPNL to design an underground power project along that corridor on the north side of the road. So they've developed a design and a proposal to do the underground electric work. It will be constructed in a little different manner than Old 41. It'll be directionally drilled, but as that work is completed, probably within about a year and a half, those power lines will go underground, and the trees that are planted alongside them will be able to grow and flourish.
Okay, now, Trittown is going to hook up the businesses or the homes on Terry Street also?
Oh, on Terry Street?
Is that separate?
That's a great point. So the commercial service connections per tariff with FPNL are the responsibility of the city. Along Terry Street, there are no commercial businesses that will be affected by the underground project, so FPNL will be doing the connections for the residential homes at their own expense. Most likely, that won't entail very much, because the power will go underground on the north side and then pop back up to an aerial condition on the south side. But any home is actually the responsibility of FPNL, so we won't have that component of that project going forward.
Okay, now, about Embarg, I mean, about CenturyLink and Comcast and all these other utilities that use our right of ways, are they going to be finished off, or what's the story with them?
So the primary, there are multiple telecommunications providers, but the primary two on the Old 41 project you mentioned, they entered into agreements with the city when we undertook that project, similar to the one we just did with FPNL, and they are underground. They've been underground for probably four years now. On West Terry Street, we're still working through the telecommunications providers and we'll have forthcoming agreements. We believe it's primarily one. I think it's Comcast is the primary one that's aerial in that corridor, but we will be bringing forth an agreement when we get one from them to wrap their piece up.
And Comcast is going to put it underground at the city's price or owner's cost?
They'll provide us an estimate, and we'll have to enter into an agreement with them if they're --
Well, it's progress. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a brief one. When will we get rid of the overhead on the south side of the road?
We don't have a project planned for that.
Is it going to be real expensive to do it? A ballpark?
There's no ballparks. With FPNL, until you have something designed, I'm not an electrical engineer, I couldn't even begin to speak for what their costs are, but if you're looking to design an underground project on all of the side streets south of Terry Street, I think it would be pretty sizable in cost.
Yes, Amy?
I just want to say that I thought that the consent agreement list was particularly happy news in many ways. I could go down every one of these and say, we're doing a good job. I was delighted to see the undergrounding of utilities. It's really great to see the contract for the baseball park. I agree about the Maddox Lane sidewalk extension. There's so many improvements that are listed on this list that we just passed, you know, within a consent agreement, that we should take some time to just rejoice that we've reached these points, and I just wanted to point that out. You know, every part of this made me happy when I read it, so it was nice to have this all together in one place on one meeting.
Thank you, Amy. Anybody else? I'm going to public hearing. Do we have any public comment on item number 10?
Excuse me, Mayor, are we going to, are you going to talk about your item here, this informational item?
Because you pulled --
Or is Arlene going to talk about that?
Whatever voted, huh? Did you want more, make it fine.
The part of the agenda that addresses -- The part of the agenda that addresses mayor and council items at this portion is when we would have a green sheet from a mayor or council member item. The following one, number 13, is the reports that are provided by council.
I'm sorry. When I read it, I thought we were going to get some information.
Amy, she's going to come back next meeting with more information as to where we're going with that, please.
Okay, I thought, I thought we were going to have it today, because it says we're supposed to discuss it, but it's okay. We'll wait till next meeting.
The item was, the item was to ask if we could bring back plans.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed, I didn't hear correctly. I'm sorry, I apologize.
I don't think that's what it says, but that's fine.
So, yes, the informational item regarding the Dixie Moon, we do have the funds and we have an estimate to do the requested maintenance work to be done. We distributed today via email the past plans that the city architect had provided. At a future date, we'd probably like to workshop the council's views on where the next steps are for the Dixie Moon. One being is that your staff's recommendation would probably to discontinue the search for historic preservation grant funds for this, since we are unlikely to receive those since we've relocated the structure. And then have a vision from council on what you'd like to see to move forward, then we could start planning that appropriately within the CIP with a scheduled plan of improvements you'd like to make, whether that be as a welcome center, or just all the different suggestions that had been provided.
Thank you, Arlene.
I'm going to need some help here, because if I turn this on, it makes that noise. So somebody's got to come and take away my thing.
Debbie, do you have a result from the vote?
Yes, I do. Richard Myers received six votes, Travis Burgon received five, Jessica Zimmerman four, and John Pano six. So it would be Richard Myers, Travis Burgon, and John Pano.
Thank you, Debbie.
And I would just like to say thank you to Alicia, and she will be missed, and we appreciate her time and effort on the board. You want to try this one? I haven't touched it.
It gets worse at every meeting.
This is fun. Okay, number 10. Public hearing, consider home rule development agreement between the city of Benita Springs and BBR LLC. Two properties on both sides, the one borders the city hall and the other one, and both of them border the interest into Spanish wells. John, are you going to present this or start us off?
Mayor, just one step back. If we, could we, could we confirm the vote on the appointments for the Historic Preservation Board?
We need a motion.
We need a motion as second for the vote.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Thank you.
We have a, the staff has a small presentation, and the applicant, the applicant has a presentation as well. But just to set the tone a little bit for what this is, I've had some questions about why this isn't a planned development, why it's a, why it's a development agreement. And so what a development agreement is, is essentially, it is similar to a planned development where we are agreeing to make site condition changes to our land development code, deviations and variances according to a plan which also includes public facilities. So in this case, there was a, there's been longstanding discussions with the adjoining property owners of the city hall about some habitats that the city had interest in, as well as some connectivity items. And so that's the process we're going through. It's a two-hearing process. Both are public hearings. We would be looking for any input the council has tonight, if there's any changes or requests that need to be made before the next public hearing. Also, unlike a planned development, we are not affecting anything with regards to uses on this property. This is only with respect to site development criteria.
Well, gee whiz, I have some comments. Can I give my thoughts and comments at this time?
Should we go through the presentation in case any of them get answered through their, through those?
I only have a couple of quick slides. I know that the applicant, I think, has a presentation as well. Whenever you would like to ask questions, I guess it would be fine, but that's up to you. So if you would like me to proceed, I can, or if you would like me to answer some questions, I can do that as well. Up to you, Mr. Mayor.
I'd like, I'd like to give my, give my two cents in before --
Yes, sir.
-- so they can answer them while, while they're giving their presentation. First one is home rule is something new to me and us. Home rule, I agree with it. The Article 3B, 10 years, what happens after 10 years? And it may take five years before they build this, so also it should have an offer of renewal of this. This is the connection between city hall and the, and the other neighboring property. And then it says that this deal is terminated, final build out. And it also says that there's a private, a separate private agreement. Now, we're a government. I don't think we can have separate, anything private. So those are my concerns. If you all would like to give a presentation, go ahead. Thank you.
Does he want to? Let me address, White, the home rule agreement. Your ordinances provide for either a 163 agreement or a home rule agreement, so we are proceeding under the home rules section of your code. It's been in effect for 10 years, because in discussing this with the staff, they didn't want it to be an in perpetuity, and it was believed that 10 years would be more than sufficient to have the site developed. I do know that there are some of you that have questions about the interconnect. What we've committed to is to provide an easement up to the property line. The city would have to make adjustments to your site in order to make that connection. And there are those folks who have inquired about whether or not there would be shared parking, and I know there's a security issue due to the materials that are used in the building and sold. I do believe that there's some indication that security could be provided. I would tell you that your land development code provides that if you're going to share parking, you have an actual LDC provision, and that requires a separate agreement. So if that's going to occur, I would envision that you would follow your code, and we'd have a separate agreement, and that would have different terms. Does that answer your questions?
Yes, it does. The liability of our people parking on their property should be addressed, yes.
And that, and that is something that the applicant's counsel and I have discussed. If there is a shared parking agreement, which the, the plan development code allows, we would enter into a separate agreement on that point. One of the issues that I know has been discussed is, in the event that this would be overflow parking only for large events at City Hall, we would probably have a, as a contractual provision, that we would pay for a deputy to patrol outside during those events.
Possibly this connection could be closed when not, when not used by the city?
I, I don't, I don't think that you'd be looking to, to close the connection. It would be something that was open. I think that the, what we're discussing with the parking, it either, there would be an agreement in place that it would be allowed to be used for overflow parking, or there would not be an agreement. So, there really wouldn't be, sometimes it was used and sometimes it wouldn't. But, that would be something, as Ms. Montgomery outlined before, would be addressed under a separate shared parking agreement, so those terms would be brought back to you in the future.
I also consider that if we had a 5:30 meetings, maybe the businesses next door would not need that parking lot as much, something like that. It's just a thought.
I think, I think at the time that we discussed the terms of this agreement, meeting times and other conditions would have to be addressed as well. So, the fact that there would be only one evening meeting might be the only time that they would discuss the shared parking arrangement.
Okay, we'll keep working on it, fellas. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other comments? Amy?
I just have a clarification, and I, I don't know why it's working so this way.
Can't hear it.
I'll try to speak louder, because I don't think this is urgent.
Something wrong with that mic.
There's something wrong with this one.
I can't hear.
I just, the entrance and exit onto the highway.
Councilwoman Corumba, can we hold on until we get your mic on, because nobody can-
It's starting.
Fun, fun, fun.
I told you before it wasn't. I, I think this would happen in development orders. The entrance and exit onto Bonita Beach Road, that would be determined whether they need turns, turns, or if they can't make a left-hand turn and all that. That's not, we're not doing, right? This is something that we'll, we'll figure out later on.
Correct. Right, right now, a, a lot of the interconnection allows for access to Spanish Wells Boulevard and the traffic signal there.
Right.
Any additional connections would be permitted not only by the city, but also mainly by Lee County-
Right. They have to go through the regular process of doing that.
Correct.
And so, and we're not doing that here. We're just showing that there might be those connections, and they have to be determined later.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all. I, I thought that was, I wanted to be sure.
Now, John, does, does, uh, Spanish Wells have any ownership of these two properties?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any more comment?
This is a public hearing, so, before taking the final vote-
Public, public, public comment? Come on, public. Okay, I guess, seeing none, I guess we could vote?
Clarification. Aren't, aren't we having another hearing? This is only, this is only the first, so- So, this is a motion to move it to the second. Like your first readings, this would go on to the second meeting. If you have any additional comments, I think one thing we could try and work out by the second meeting, and if not, have a contingent later on, is the park, shared parking arrangement. I'm glad you said that.
Okay.
I make a motion to move to second reading.
Ready, Deb?
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Okay, very good.
We're done.
Nice.
Number 11, city attorneys report?
I, I actually have a few items for you tonight. So, the, the first item I have is, we've already authorized the purchase and sale agreement, development agreement for the Magnus project. That project will be moved, that is, the, the food truck park downtown, that project is moving forward. We are in the middle of title work on that, and there are some additional steps, documents, easements, and things that may be required moving forward. I just want to let you know that I may be adding those items on, on future agendas so that that can all get worked out with the title company, so they can keep moving towards closing. The second item is in the matter of the Walter McCarthy et al., which is essentially the Bay Creek and Bayside CDD challenge to the stormwater utility. That case is still proceeding. There is a trial scheduled for July. Based on the direction I have previously received from the Council, we have worked out a, a, internal appellate process for obtaining additional credits. However, in discussions with my opposing counsel, there has been some thought that we may be able to work out a more specified solution for that, those two CDDs. And what I am, I am looking to do is to schedule a meeting, basically a mediation between the two parties, to see if we can come up with a resolution without having to adopt additional changes to the utility. And I'm looking to see if there are any takers or delegates from the Council who would like to participate in that meeting. I would. If, if there's no objections, I, I would like to see a, an actual delegation, a motion to that effect.
I don't think I should, I don't believe I should participate since I live in that community, so I'm not participating.
If, if you wanna, do you, are you seeking to recuse from the, from the vote?
We're, we're voting on what you just recommended.
Yes, well, I, I see that Councilman Corey has, has asked to be, has raised his hand, stepped forward to be in the, in the mediation.
And, and we'll vote on him.
Was, was there any others? Yeah. And Councilman Forbes? You guys wanna work it out, or? I, I really should only have one.
Why don't you flip a coin?
Does anyone have a coin anymore?
I do.
Okay. I'm sorry, Councilman Cor-
Fred wants to go ahead and do-
Okay. Can I get a motion to that effect?
I'm making a motion that Fred represents the Council on mediation.
Second.
Debbie, can we get a roll call on that?
Mayor Steinmeier?
I'm not sure what I'm voting on.
You're, you're voting to appoint Councilman Forbes to participate in the conversations with the Bayside and Bayview, uh-
Bayside.
Creekside and, Bay Creek and Bayside CDD on settling of the lawsuit.
Whatever, yes.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
I could even say yes or pass, I don't, whatever you think is best.
I, I don't think there's an actual conflict on this one.
Okay, okay. I'll say yes, all right.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. The only other item I have for you this evening is on the South Lee EDC, a matter that we discussed at the last meeting. I did follow up with Ms. Esposito informing her of the Council's desire to look at either picking, or opening it up to two members, or to have a rotation. And it was responded back to me that the EDC would prefer to do the rotation, to retain one member and have it rotating between Councilwoman Corumba and Councilman Purdon.
That's a good solution.
Only one member, so that's good.
One member, but it'll rotate every other meeting.
Okay. Do we have to vote on that, or is-
No, you've already taken action on that.
Okay, thank you.
I have nothing else.
City managers report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. We just wanted to advise everyone of Executive Order 2147. I know it was released in many press releases as well, but the Governor has now extended the vaccine opportunity to long-term care facility, as it was, long-term care facility residents and staff, persons 65 years and older, healthcare personnel, and direct patient contact. K through 12 school employees, 50 years of age and older have been added, sworn law enforcement officers, 50 years of age and older have been added, and firefighters, 58 years of age and older. Lee County will now be providing a weekly, Lee County Health will now be providing a weekly update on vaccine administration. The last update provided to us concluded that 164,339 doses of the first vaccine have been administered in Lee County. We understand that 42% of Lee County residents aged 65 and over have been vaccinated to the state, as well as 48% of Florida residents aged 65 and over have been vaccinated to the state. They will continue to provide updates on future vaccines available. We understand that another influx is to be coming to, to the state, so we might be receiving another update from the Governor soon. The only other item I wanted to address with you is, we are getting closer to some conclusions on some of the grants, the federal grants that we have received. At this time, we think it would be beneficial to have a workshop with Council to go over the FEMA grants that we received, as well as kind of give you some updates on some of the other funding through Parks and Recreation. There's been some delays due to COVID on some of those projects and funding. I know there's a lot of inquiries, so I think we'd like to have a discussion to provide an update. We were hopeful that after the City Council meeting on March 24th, we may be able to adjourn into a workshop at that time, if that works with Council's schedule.
I'll make a motion that we have the workshop.
Sounds good to me. I'll second that. Do you have any more comments? The 24th already for everybody afterwards?
Well, we will do our best to keep that agenda light so that we can have enough time for the-
That's a nine o'clock morning.
Correct.
Very good.
And, and as, as a reminder, that is, there is no decisions made at workshops, and, and it's an opportunity for open discussion among the Council.
Okay, thank you. It'll probably be here.
We, we would probably adjourn to the other meeting room for that.
Okay, very good. Deb, roll call, please.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye. Okay, lucky 13. I, uh, Mayor and Council members report. I have a comment. I received an email from Thomas Sanders, and he says that we have some plans to improve the traffic flow in the city of Bonita Springs. And, well, the last two years between Irma and, and COVID, we've been pretty slow in, in our motion. And I'm hoping that the staff will come back to the next meeting with some ideas, what we can do to help the flow of traffic through this, our great city of Bonita Springs. You have enough information, or?
Yes, Mayor, if, if, if you would allow us, if we could have a little bit additional time than just the next meeting. We are getting some updates from FDOT. We can send out an email, but if you could give us a little bit more time than next meeting, I think this following meeting will work on the grant update to you, but maybe the future meeting after that, if that's acceptable.
Okay. Do something. This time of year is, is bumper to bumper for the last 72 years that I know during seasons, so.
And we're hopeful to have, you know, maybe it's in the next month or so, an update from FDOT, the information we're receiving from the quadrant study as well, so we'd like to provide that as soon as we have that updated information.
Lee County DOT committed that they were gonna resurface from 41 to City Hall, where those manhole covers were boom, bang, that that's gonna be resurfaced in June. So, I'm gonna hold on to that, so. Anything else? Any other comments, Mayor?
Yeah.
Mayor?
I do too.
Are these just comments, or are these are, these are regular time when we have to speak? I, I just wanted to say that I attended two Horizon-
(phone rings)
Oh, God. There's something wrong. Two Horizon Council meetings. One was a general meeting, which was kind of interesting, because it included FGCU, Regional Economic Research Institute Director. And they provided subsequent to the meeting, a report of the economic conditions in Lee County. I shared that with Arlene, so if anybody's interested, you could just email her, and I'm sure she would forward to her, that, that to you, if you have an interest in that. The other one, the other presenter was the Millennium Physicians Group, where they showed what they had done to encourage and develop a very strong telemedicine process within Lee County. And again, it was very interesting, it was amazing that they're now doing 1,500 telemedicine appointments a day, I mean, a week out of there. Plus, they have their in-person appointments, too, so that was interesting. The, the other thing I wanted to say, though, the second, the second meeting that I went to was an executive board meeting, where I think I mentioned it the last time, that, that Lee County has a, something what they call I dig Lee, I dig Lee, which is a, an industry appreciation event on, on steroids. They had all kinds of special events scheduled for, for May, and they've gotten some feedback from the participants that were supposed to be in this, and they were reluctant to come because of COVID, so they've decided to postpone that meeting to October. They had trouble with speakers that were supposed to come, and also the people they were honoring. And I think that was kind of an interesting development, because they were all, all set to have 500-plus people come to the New Luminary Hotel. But, they, they had some concerns, and they didn't think that they could have the kind of event that they wanted, so they decided to just postpone. It's gonna be held in October. And, and then finally, I did have a meeting along with Arlene and, and Derek and Matt with some people, the, the council person and some, the manager from Asterro, to talk again about construction along Coconut Road. Nothing was decided. We felt that the presentation had some incompleteness to it in regard to costing and, and the projects that they're suggesting, so we just, you know, we just have to keep talking, basically. They were concerned about the potential development that might be coming out of Raptor Bay and Bayview, in regard to the effect on the traffic. So, that's, that's an ongoing discussion between two entities, Asterro and Bonita Springs. Pretty much informational.
Amy, has either one of those developments started?
No.
Okay. So, it's a mute point for a while, yeah?
Right.
We got time, time to worry about it.
Correct. At least, in my view.
Okay.
I don't know about in their view.
Jesse?
Uh, yes, yes, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to congratulate the new members of the Historic Board, first of all. Special shout out to the District Two member who got on. And then also, I'd like to say that I was, excuse me, I was on the Big Cypress Basin Call with Arlene, and I think Matt might have been on there as well. I'll just say that I think that we had very positive language in there, and I think that very encouraging signs from both sides as far as how the legislation is developing in Tallahassee. I think, you know, there's still some small issues to be ironed out, but I actually do feel optimistic that it may come to, it may actually come to fruition this time around, so we'll see. But, that's where it's at for right now. Nothing's official and done. There's still a little bit of back and forth. You know, the, the basin has some technical issues in regards to the allocation of the dollars, what it can be spent on, things like that. And then, you know, there's been some high-level discussion regards to, you know, is it proportional or not regarding the number of seats? So, if there's gonna be five seats, you know, is it, how's it gonna be laid out? And one of the ways it's gonna be laid out, which created some initial, you know, upset feelings from Lee County, was it's gonna be one and four, so one, one Lee person, four Collier. But, the good thing is, with that, upon looking into it further, it, it doesn't matter where they live. They can live on the moon, because the way the legislation is now written, it has to be spent within the county with which it was taxed. So, it doesn't matter if they live in Collier, or if they live in Texas. Bottom line, our dollars stay here in Lee County if it goes through as it is, so who's on the board, you know, is maybe more of a, more of a, you know, superficial thing in regards to how it initially sounds when you hear one and four. So, if there's anybody who's accused, diffused on that, you know, I, it threw me for a loop, so I looked into it, and that's what's going on with that. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, Jesse. Good job.
I'd like to extend prayers and sympathy for Rush Limbaugh's family, friends, and fans. And way to go, Texas! Governor Abbott, you rock! And way to go, Mississippi, for filing along!
I'd like to congratulate our Governor with his CPAC presentation, and he was also on with Liberty Levine, Life Liberty and Levine. He is a very good spokesman, and he's number two behind President Trump to run for president next time. Thank you.
I'm good.
Mike?
Dilly-dilly, I'm good, and let's get out of here.
Yeah, let's go home, or whatever.
Okay, I've got three items.
Okay. I've got three items. I'll go through them real quickly. One of them really should be supported by everybody. I don't think anybody would be against this, but the Charlotte County and Lee County MPO voted, actually in February of 17, to try and get I-75 in Lee and Charlotte County designated as a Purple Heart Highway. Somehow, it never got beyond the MPO. So, this year, we've contacted our Lee delegation. We also contacted the Charlotte delegation, and for good measure, we contacted Senator Pasadena and asked them if they would move on designating I-75. It's really a no-cost ask, to make it a Purple Heart Highway. And then I put in it that I'm sure that none of the colleagues, of your colleagues, would be object if you wanted to throw Collier in for good measure. There wasn't time to have a meeting with the MPO of Collier joint meeting. So, that, I just got word by email from Senator Pasadena today, that she was supportive of this. So, I think it's got a chance it may lift off. What I would ask is, anybody that is either on the Veterans Committee, has good relations with the commanders of VFW, American Legion, AMVETS, all these different veterans organizations, get them to send emails. I'm going to give Arlene a copy of the email that went to the delegations, the list of the email addresses, so they could do a copy paste and get some. The more letters and emails that come in, the better the chance. The second thing is that we will be firing up all kind of legislative actions are going to go on in the next month and a half, month, two months. So, you'll be getting emails, which will come out, or similar to what we had in the committee week, where we'll be getting information on different bills. I may oppose some of them, but anyone that wants to support a bill, more power to you. That's what freedom, freedom of choice is about. The last thing, I want to make everybody aware that Lee Tran, I approached Lee Tran when I was chairman of MPO, about at least looking into running shuttle buses on maybe 20-minute schedules from Bonita National all the way out to Bonita Beach, and then up to Lover's Key. And there's actually a Lee Tran bus that comes down from Fort Myers Beach that you could have a change at. They didn't, they're actually interested in it, and that it would be kind of similar, but a little better, because there'd be bigger vehicles than what Fort Myers Beach has got tram service now frequently from Fort Myers area down into Fort Myers Beach. So, I just want you to know about that. If I get any new information, I'll let you know.
Okay. Thank you, Fred. Are we ready to approve the minutes?
Absolutely. I move to approve them.
Second.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Okay. Now, we have public comment. Come on, folks. Somebody's got to have something to say. All you people at home, send your emails to the city. Let us know what's going on out there, fellas.
Hi. Hi. My name is Ray Nichols. I'm currently a student at Florida Gulf Coast University, and I just want to make a few comments about the presentation tonight. First of all, the room is bad acoustics. I could hardly hear, and here I am sitting in the front seat, front row.
You're not the only one.
I see, I see that you all have microphones. You all have earpieces. The earpieces interfere with the microphones and vice versa, I assume. When you talk to each other, I can't hear what you're saying, and I'm sitting right in the front row. That's one thing. Florida has a sunshine law where comments made by the body plus the public should be loud enough so that people can hear what's going on. I don't see that here. You're supposed to speak to the audience, too, I think, not each other. That would make more sense to me. And speak into the mic, too, and address the body when you're, when you're talking. And the cross-talk with the council members, that's kind of rude, I think, to the public. It's the public's setup, you know? It's not just you guys. And there's no elocution from most of you. And that's, that, I think, is a public problem, you know? So, I just want to address that. You know, it's not to berate you, or, you know, define something different. I mean, it's obvious that the acoustics in a room like this are really bad. A suggestion I might want to make is, put a partition here and just do one side of the room, so the public can hear you. Thank you.
Well, thanks for your comments. Do you have anything good to say? Did you read the agenda? Did you approve anything that we, we approved? Can you hear me? Okay. Well, we're trying. We're trying. You know, the, these meetings cost the taxpayer a lot of money. And we certainly have a crew that keeps trying to, we're remodeling our city hall. I guess you realize that. And, and this is just temporary, and I apologize. And you're not the only one that has trouble hearing what's going on around here. I'm supposed to be running this place. So, thanks for your comments, and we'll try to improve it. The next meeting, we're going to have a workshop. It'll be over in a smaller building after the televised. You see, this is televised, so we have to have more equipment and stuff. It takes quite a while and quite a staff to set this up, so the people that are afraid to come to city council meetings, or have COVID, or whatever, can see what's going on in their city. And what are you studying at FGCU? Well, good luck to you. Thank you so much for showing up. I know you care.
Motion to adjourn.
The next meeting will be March 24th at 9:00 in the morning. Is there any other business before the city council at this time?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We're adjourned. Thank you.